Alright, I called the city Roslin council meeting to order Tuesday, June twenty second, twenty twenty one. The time is four thirty one. We all stand and have a flag suit please.
United States of America, to every part for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty for all.
Uh, council member Adams.
Present.
Council member Missile.
Present.
Council member White.
Here.
Council member Cook.
Here.
Council member Gruber.
Here.
Council member Shear. Mayor House.
Yep.
I think, uh, council member Shear, uh, informed us he probably wasn't gonna make it tonight. Can I get a motion to excuse him?
I make a motion to excuse.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Anybody opposed, say name. Uh, I've got that one agenda update tonight. I'm gonna take the solid waste, uh, declaration of concurrence off tonight, uh, so that we can all have a better idea of what that entails. I thought it was informational, but apparently they want us to pass the resolution, so we'll put that on the next meeting. That's all, and that's all I've got for agenda updates. So move forward on the consent agenda this evening is checks and EFTs as follows. Counts payable of June twenty second, twenty twenty one, check number one seven, one eight, nine to one seven, two, one, three. Amount of fifty six thousand, seven hundred and thirty nine dollars and sixty four cents. Payroll of June twentieth, twenty twenty one, amount of twenty nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty five dollars and fifty six cents. And minutes from our June eighth meeting.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to move the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Discussion here council. All in favor say aye please.
Alright.
Aye.
Anybody opposed that agenda, say name, your name.
Real quick mayor. The, uh, US bank corporate payment system, nine thousand dollars.
Uh, Nolan, they had to buy the computers for the water plant and then some software to go along with it.
Okay, so that's.
And then shipping, so it's mostly the, uh, water plant computers.
Sweet, that's awesome, it's been purchased.
Yep, big chunk of it, at least.
Yeah. And then city of Cleona, thirty thousand dollars, is that for the, uh, uh, water or is that for the, uh, police agreement?
Uh, police sewer agreement, it's just our monthly, monthly.
Installment.
Yep.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, let's move on then, uh, to the committees and commissions and we'll start with, uh, chief bland with the police department. Cook, are you on?
Yes, thank you mayor, council, um, to give you some updates, I talked about purchasing, uh, car and body camera systems, uh, through Harbor Tech. And just an update on those, they are having a gutter chips shortage, so we still don't have them. Uh, the G-Tech technician came up along with the company that has been awarded the subcontract to actually do the installation of the equipment. And, uh, check out the cars to get everything ready, because now they believe they're about four weeks to maybe six weeks out. So that's good news that they're coming anyway. We're, we are gearing up for the fourth of July, they're gonna have a full celebration, uh, with a parade and fireworks. So we're kinda excited to be back to normal on those. So the parade will be on Saturday, July third, and it's gonna start at eleven. And then the fireworks will start on July fourth themselves, about ten PM, basically dusk. And just giving a heads up, they're going to close the West Railroad Street alongside the Y Park. That will remain closed for the weekend, because they're gonna have all sorts of different festivities and food vendor trucks and stuff like that, uh, in the Y Park to include the roadway itself. So, um, just giving you guys a heads up, that's gonna happen. And finally, we, uh, got the opportunity to order a couple new patrol cars. Um, as you know, I've, you've heard me talk before, we were in desperate need of new patrol cars. And, uh, the bid went out and it went through, uh, FCI, they're at that, uh, out of North Bend. So, boarding the cars, unfortunately, they won't be here till the end of the year. It takes several months to even get the patrol car to the dealer where they can, uh, do the installation of all the equipment. But this is the same company that's gonna end up doing, doing our installation for the body cameras. And I was able to save several thousand dollars by, uh, not putting the new cameras into the cars that are gonna be replaced. Uh, they agreed to let us hold back three of those systems. And then when they get our new cars, we'll just put those systems in the car. So we were able to, uh, save a few thousand dollars that way. And that's about all I have to report unless there's any questions.
Well, if there's no, uh, questions council, I, I thank the chief, uh, very much and again, welcome to Roslin.
Thank you.
Thank you chief.
Uh, next up would be the fire department, do we have chief Oshatus on the phone today, chief? Or any officers? Okay, then we'll move on, oh, we got something? Okay, we'll move on to committee's permissions. And, uh, I guess first up, let's just start with, uh, cemetery councilman Adams, you got anything from the cemetery group?
Nope, I think we covered it last meeting and we'll have a, another cemetery commission meeting coming up, um, at the end of the month, and so it'll update us next time.
Perfect, thank you, uh, council member Cook, you got anything for the citizens advisory committee?
Um, no, the, the, I'll, I will after the upcoming, um, meeting next, um, coming up here, um, in July.
And then I did attach, this Michelle, I did attach the most recent, um, uh, financial report from AFM as well.
Uh, as far as the last group of commissions, uh, planning and historic preservation, uh, council member Missile, do you have something?
Here, um, Michelle, an attachment for our special meeting, um, kind of forward with the master plan development. And we wanted to get some input from the rest of council as well, um, so read through that, feel free to get back to me either via email, one at a time. Um, and I'll share it with Michelle and the group, uh, it was really good meeting, so if you have thoughts, email them to me, um, and we'll get them from the next meeting on the fifteenth.
Thanks Tom. Um, next up with our committees, the sense chairperson Shear is not here, it is council person Cook, wanna talk about the admin meeting?
Um, yeah, um, I'd like to, and also I'd mention that, um, Jeff Adams, uh, joined us in this, the last meeting a week ago. And so, um, I wanna talk about the real estate excise tax and I believe he's gonna talk about the BNO tax. Basically, we, what we talked about was, uh, not ways to cut any, any expenses, but, um, how to, uh, actually, um, gain revenue. So, um, here's, um, the real estate excise tax, um, we collect a quarter of one percent on real estate sales. That's half of what we could, could collect. Um, and if we did collect the ex, the other half of that, that would give us another twenty eight thousand dollars a year. So not a huge, I mean, it's not gonna get us out of the hole completely, but if, every little bit, you know, helps. Uh, the problem is, uh, that if we were to go ahead with that right now, it's on a really tight, um, uh, time, time schedule here. So we would have to have a ballot measure into the county by, by August third. Um, I did call Sue Higginbotham this morning at the county elections office and because this is a major election coming up, excuse me. It would only cost us like a thousand dollars to get it on the ballot. So, um, there are real reasons to try and, and move it ahead quickly if that's what council wants to do. Um, the other issue would be, um, I know Sarah was gonna check with state to make sure that we are, at this point, only collecting the, the one quarter of one percent. But, um, I did find, I did find a chart from the department of revenue from January twenty twenty that pretty much shows that, um, that's what we are collecting. So I guess my question is, um, how does council wanna proceed with this, or do you wanna proceed with it?
I believe we should, and, but fortunately, we need to figure out how to make, how to get more revenue and, um, yeah, everybody said, uh, we might've missed the vote with the real estate, but hey, if we start it now, we'll just start the, uh, trend, so I would say, um, yes, even though I'm not always for more taxes, but in this, uh, in this regard, I think we should. But yeah, so if we can look, I guess if we can look more into it, if we can get a, a proposal by next council, or we can do something like in that, in that measure.
Okay, well, we can, you know, iron out the wrinkles and bring it to council on, on July thirteenth. That's gonna make it really tight in terms of getting it, you know, getting the law, the lawyer would have to write the ballot measure, so I don't know if she'd be able to do that in two weeks or not, but, um, I, it's worth a shot, in my opinion.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and then, uh, Jeff is gonna talk about the BNO tax.
Yeah, um, so we had a great admin meeting, I haven't been to an admin meeting this year and I thought I would join the group as the, uh, year went on since they were down to two members, so, um, and I'm gonna continue doing that, uh, joining that group also. So a couple things, uh, what Catherine brought up, we really just sort of want every council member to get that sort of around your head, the ballot, it'll be, if the county can do it for a thousand, I think the attorney fees is probably the other part of that, we need to find out what it would take to write that up, so we sort of know what that budget is, but, um, let's say it costs us five or six thousand dollars. If it brought in another twenty eight thousand, um, it would be well worth it, then the next year it'd already be covered and we'd be able to just continue that revenue throughout, so, um, something to think about, what Catherine brought up, I think it's a good one to, to think about. Um, I'm gonna talk about a couple things, I brought up the BNO tax, passing it on to residents, which the majority of cities do. Um, we are one that does not, and, uh, at least not all of it, so, um, I believe it's almost six percent split between us and, and the residents and several do it a hundred percent. Um, so we balanced some numbers about and, um, we would like you to think of, council members to think about, um, moving our rate up to about sixteen percent and passing it on to, to taxpayers, um, and ratepayers, I should say. Um, that increase is just over four dollars a month. Um, but it's the stamp for revenue down, the, the revenue pickup, and we'll bring those numbers to council the next council meeting. Um, we're gonna bring the math in and, uh, with all three of us can get together, we just couldn't get it together with Jeff and the two of us this week, so, um, if you can start thinking about that increase, um, we are definitely focused on some revenue increases this year and how we can do that, and it, some of it is possibly raising a few fees, so, um, if you can think about that between now and the next council, where your feelings are on that, um, so we can make a direction. The BNO cannot go in effect until next year, um, but I do not wanna put this to the end of fall and have it be forgotten and we're back into the beginning and next year doing this again. So I would like next council meeting, we make the decision and we have that decision made, and by the time next year starts, we can just move forward with it. So please get your heads around that and think about those, that increase. Um, another option that came up when we were talking is, um, we all know that we've talked about and we agree that we are gonna raise the storm fund this year. Um, but, you know, I find it hard if we're looking at any other increases to continue passing those on to our ratepayers with the era of COVID and not everybody having full-time jobs and working and so forth, so, um, one of those options is, um, when I look at our, our, our budget for water, sewer and storm, um, our storm fund has about four hundred and seventy four thousand dollars roughly in it right now. Um, we don't have any major, uh, I should say, I'm sorry, that was sewer fund, we don't have any major sewer projects coming up, talking to the engineer and so forth. Um, and part of my thought was, we, we allocate seventy four thousand dollars in the storm fund, which we all know is virtually nil in our storm fund for what we need to do. I would like to think about possibly, possibly, and with council input, is take and maybe lessen the fund that's going into store, into sewer for a year or two. And allocate, uh, money that would go to storm rather, we pay fifty one, forty two in sewer right now out of the bill. Our water is sixty five, thirty one out of that bill. And our storm, which is in the scenario of two dollars and eighty seven cents. I think they should look at this possibly, if our sewer fund is healthy and we feel we have no major structures, I would like to find a way that we can, I would prefer to not increase that and take funding, uh, from sewer and allocate it towards storm to increase that fund, so we could build that fund up. And this way it would be really just transferring, um, not a direct transfer, you have to do it legally, so it's through policy. Um, but basically increase the storm amount per month and decrease the sewer amount per month for a couple years to offset that balance to increase that fund. And that was just another thought of, uh, sharing revenues through, and we take in from taxpayers and ratepayers, um, to build another fund without increasing the rates on them. So if you can think about that also, we're gonna bring all this to council the very next meeting, um, and I'd like to, um, I'm not the chair, but I'd like to see us make decisions on these and so we can move forward on any revenue increases that we can capture. Any feedback?
Okay.
Okay Jeff, thank you, and, uh.
Kathy, did I miss anything Kathy?
I'm sorry, yeah, no, you, you got it Jeff, and, and thanks a lot, it was great to have you at the, at the admin, uh, committee meeting.
Thank you Kathy, no, nothing's good, I, I look forward to joining you guys again, you guys again.
Great, thanks.
And Kathy, I know that we've got a call into the state on the, on where we stand with the real estate, uh, excise tax, so we'll go, we'll get the answer there as well before the next meeting, hopefully. The state, of course, is behind because of COVID and, and staffing issues of their, of their own.
Okay, thanks.
So we'll move on to, I don't know if the public works chair or, uh, council member White, do you have anything you wanna put on here?
Not at this time, no.
I, bubba's here, I got my report.
Yeah bubba, go ahead and give your report.
Okay, right on, I know, I got skipped or what.
Oh no, never.
Anyways, uh, no, it's been great, uh, we head back up the transmission main, we marked out, um, all the spots to install the, the, those new no grading, no plowing signs. So we're gonna try to do that the first week of July, since next week we have to read meters. Um, the TMG services coming up through the water treatment plant Thursday due to our annual maintenance on the gas coronator. Also, the new computer was supposed to be installed the twenty first, or, which was Monday, but it's gonna be installed on the twenty eighth. Cause they had to, some with some extra programming and install something else, so that'll be done Monday, so that'll be good to go. Um, we'll also continue on, Pat's and Paul's are on town, you probably noticed some there by Fourth and Penn in Washington. So we got a little bit, but cold mix left, we're gonna kinda work it throughout the summer, just so we kinda have it nice before we go into fall and winter. Uh, we started cleaning up the back border of Pioneer Park, so it'll look sharp for the rest of summer and the Croatian picnic. We, uh, pulled the old concrete picnic table pads that were trip hazard and cracked and broken. We leveled those areas with some dirt, planted grass, and we also took apart two of the big old wood plank, um, picnic tables that were kinda falling apart and unsafe and we kinda salvaged enough lumber, we can make one nice one out of both those. We took, the log show let us have those three old logs that have been kinda laying in the park the last four or five years. So we cut them up and even length, made a new border on the street side of the playground, which will make it safer for the kids, especially with all the parking there. Um, we graded and added rock to that right away for the parking lot. We've also been out about weeding and fire hydrants, blow offs, since it's fire season and plus, since we knocked all that down, Kyle's still been out painting hydrants, we're gonna paint the blow offs, try to get most everything done before winter. So adding snow poles on top of them, but it's nice when you're plowing, seeing a bright hydrant, not something that's faded and white color. Uh, I got the convex mirror in for top of Second Street Hill, we just gotta find time to install that in the next couple of weeks. Uh, other than that, we continued on with the routine maintenance of the cemetery and parks, changing waters and mowing, and tomorrow we were gonna, we will start painting, um, some yellow curbs downtown and, uh, painting in front of the fire, uh, station, so. Anyways, that's all I got, if you guys got any questions.
Keep up the good work bubba.
Great, thank you.
Hey, right on guys.
Thanks bubba.
No problem.
Okay, we'll move on to, uh, announcements, uh, we'll start off first with, uh, council member Adams, I believe has a Craven memorial presentation he must have put in front of council.
We do, um, I do, um, I think I'll need some help with Michelle, I don't know if they can put up, if, if everybody's looked at their council packs, there's a location and so forth identified. Um, so what we have is the RDA, um, has went to the state and, uh, we have made a proclamation of Willie Craven with the first, uh, black mayor in the state of Washington. Um, all of us Roslinites should be very, very proud of, of that achievement. Um, and during this, what's happened is, is there's gonna be a, a bronze proclamation plaque approximately nine inches by twelve inches, just like a page would be with the proclamation on it. And there is going to be a pedestal made, uh, that will carry that, um, proclamation, so people could come up and read it, it'll be made by Flowers Fabrication, will be doing the pedestal for us. Um, and the RDA will take care of that funding and, uh, getting the pedestal set. And the location is, been presented right now, it will be confirmed here in just a little bit down the road. Uh, we just wanna make sure we cover everything with the family and everybody's on board with the location, so far we have thumbs up. Um, I just wanna finalize it one last time, but that spot would be, uh, if you're looking at the coal miners, uh, memorial, it would be to the left of it. There's, uh, about a twenty foot spot that's nice and wide open with sidewalk in front of it. That goes to that in the corner of sort of the NWI where the sidewalk comes down, there's a nice big opening right there, it gets high traffic, um, lots of visibility, which I think is important. Yep, there we go, um, I think it's a great spot, there's so much walking traffic through there, um, and that's the proposed location, and I'll get a confirmation on that by the next council meeting, but that's the proposed location. Um, it's set to be, it's set to happen, um, sometime in August, uh, it will depend on the governor's office, the governor, uh, has made a commitment to be here for the proclamation. Um, and so a little bit, um, on their schedule that I've been told, um, somewhere between the first and the fourth week of August, um, they will be presenting that and then, uh, there will be a TV station in town that want, that had got wind of this, uh, I believe, channel thirteen. Um, so it'll be a little bit of a, a nice celebration for a great historic moment in our town. Um, so I just wanted to give a presentation of that, so everybody's aware and when I get the date, um, and the final location, I'll confirm both of those, and I think it'd be important if all of us, uh, city staff and council were to be there for that, um, celebration.
Okay, thanks Jeff, I think that's a great idea, looking forward to getting the finalizations and do it in August.
Hey, could, can I make one recommendation though, just sorry, I'm sharing this again, but can we move this no parking sign closer to the road, or, so it's not in the middle of the sidewalk?
You know, I think that's a great idea Nolan, and, uh, and I wanna get rid of those square poles, so it's, we'll do two, two birds with one stone there.
Sweet.
And we'll just remove that pole where it is and push it out, I, I think it's a great idea.
Great call.
Yeah, then also we won't put that other, um, coal mines, you know, that other thing back beyond the shop.
Yeah.
We won't install that yet, then we can just figure out where we wanna put that, somewhere else.
Yeah, good idea.
I like the historic round green poles.
Well, we'll figure the poles out soon enough.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we can figure out whatever you guys want, either wood or the galvanized, we'll make it look good.
Oh yeah, I believe in you, thanks bubba.
Awesome, thank you.
So next up this evening, we've got, uh, Jim Ritter is starting a police museum in Ellensburg, and he has, uh, he wants to talk about that as well as an ask on the jail cells.
Uh, thank you, first of all, first of all, I wanna thank the mayor and the council for allowing me to speak, uh, my name is Jim Ritter, I'm a recently retired Seattle police officer for thirty seven years, and prior to that, I was a Kidattas County sheriff's deputy from eighty to eighty-three. Uh, I've had my roots in Kidattas County for a long time. Uh, I am the president and founder of the Seattle Metropolitan Police Museum, which was founded back in nineteen ninety-seven in Pioneer Square. As a way to, uh, educate the public and the police officers about their history and culture and, and such, uh, we have a, one of the largest displays of vintage original police cars in the country. And, uh, our museum was about four thousand square feet in the heart of Pioneer Square, up until three years ago, when we decided to, uh, move operations over to Ellensburg for a number of reasons. You know, the crime is increasing, the cost, and our building was built in nineteen oh eight and was starting to crumble. So, our operations are in Ellensburg now, we are negotiating, uh, with the city right now, and I'm negotiating, we, we are purchasing the property in the West Interchange area, uh, ten acres. Uh, it is going to be the Silver Star Event Center, of which fourteen thousand square feet of the twenty five thousand square feet is going to be reserved for the police museum's collections of cars and historic police, uh, artifacts. I, I was made aware of this jail cell in the city of Roslin, which was taken out a number of years ago and is in the back lot there. Uh, we would love to have a piece of local police history in, uh, this new facility, and I think this jail cell would, uh, would be perfect for that. Uh, obviously, it's very old, uh, we'd like to preserve it and, uh, keep it undercover and let the public enjoy it and understand, uh, a little bit of history about the city of Roslin and its former police force. So our ask would be, if the city would consider donating or selling the jail cell, um, we would, uh, transport it down to Ellensburg and, uh, refurbish it and then, uh, display it in the new event center. Uh, it's in the design phase right now, it's probably going to be a three-year project, but we would, uh, love to have the jail cell if the city would, would so agree. Um, if you wanna know more about the police museum, uh, it's on, uh, Google, uh, there's a number of feature stories that the media's done over the last twenty years. And, uh, we would love to continue this on in a, uh, beautiful area that is, uh, more user-friendly for the tourists and the visitors that come there, where they don't have to worry about, uh, the crime level. And, uh, we don't have to worry about the cost of affording a twenty five thousand square foot building over in the city of Seattle, so, um, if anybody's got any questions about the museum or the request, please feel free to ask.
I think it's a wonderful way to capture our history and actually have it presented somewhere, I, you know, I've stared at those jail cells forever and tried to figure out, hey, how could that be a piece of yard art, but I know my wife would lock me in it, so that's not gonna happen. Um, but I would love to see that, I mean, I think, council, we should really look at this, I think it's a fantastic opportunity to put Roslin on the map somewhere else and, um, salvage a piece of history that's out there rusting away and, you know, it's just not getting thrown out to some, that some bitter is getting out to something that actually matters to people.
Do we need to have someone from the Roslin, um, history museum weigh in on this, are they, do we know what, how they feel about it, I guess is my question?
Who owns them, I think that might be the, I'm not sure the Roslin museum has historical value with it, but we can, I have contact to the Roslin museum, I could make a direct call, um, but I think, um, I'd like to, you know, we probably should touch base with the mayor. Um, I, I think the museum, we, we have no space in our museum whatsoever, um, and I think there's two or three out there right now, I'm not sure, um, how many, were you thinking all three or both of them, what were your thoughts?
Are you talking about the cells?
Yeah, yeah Jim.
The cells are all riveted together, so.
Okay.
This company made them, I did a lot of research on the company that made the jail cells, they're all, they were all arriving in panels back in a hundred years ago, they were riveted in place in the basement of the, of the city hall, uh, and they are very permanently together.
No, no, no.
They are all one section.
Okay, yeah, no, I didn't know how they were, so that, that's good info, you've done your research, but, um, I'm more than happy to read, go ahead.
I'm guessing it probably weighs about, uh, ten thousand pounds at least, I think it's a very heavy piece of, uh, history.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it goes to actually who's responsible for them, I'm not sure that falls underneath the museum, that's something our office staff could tell us, but, um, I'm happy to reach out if council wants me to, but I also think this is a fabulous idea and a way to get those out of there and actually salvage them.
Yeah, but I, I'm kinda going with Catherine too, is, so is there a, a way, and let's just say fifty, hundred years down the road, and again, that's way down the road. But our Roslin museum actually gets funding and it builds a building and we have space for these jail cells, is there something down the road where we could take possession of these jail cells again? Like, I don't know about selling them, I don't wanna sell them because they're not, I, I don't, I don't think we would, it would be right to sell to a museum that's showcasing great history, and I think, I can't wait to take my kids to this Ellensburg, in Ellensburg, that's even more exciting, this museum. But I just wanna say for the city of Roslin's sake, like, this is a cool piece of history. But I just wanna say for the city of Roslin's sake, like, this is a cool piece of history that was always in our city hall and we can kind of live by that. But if one day our museum actually is able to house these, is that a possibility? Because I think our musei, our museum, one day, I, I hope will grow and I, I don't wanna lose any parts of our history that we could maybe hold on to. So I guess, long around question is, is there like, can we ever say, hey, we would like these back one day?
Well, normally, and this is the way it's worked for twenty years in most museums, once we take possession of a donated item, it, it becomes our possession. The other, the other key thing about this is, this is going to cost us probably five thousand dollars to get transported, not just to the restoration area, but back to the museum. It's a, it's a very labor-intensive thing. Plus, you know, for our design of the museum, the design plan would include the space specifically for this jail cell, which is pretty good size.
Yeah.
Um, and it would be very difficult to move. Uh, so I, I guess my short answer would be with, with all the expense that we would be incurring and all the labor involved in restoring this, that, uh, we would wanna retain permanent possession of it. Uh, providing the city of Roslin is certainly getting credit for donating it and the council folks that, uh, agree to this, if they agree to it and, uh, such.
Yeah.
Um, would council be all right? I mean, um, it seems like there's a little caution because of our own history and our own museum. Um, is it worthy of making a motion? We table this to the next council meeting for two weeks and we could do a little background research to make sure. Um, I guess my, my concern is, is saying that we end up keeping these. And I know what the finances are for the museum and, you know, I'm heavily involved with the Heritage Club and the museum and, and, and a, and a future build. Um, but I'm not sure that actually captures it, but I don't wanna be the one to answer that. So I would like to make a motion that we table this, do research, let me do some background research and concern and, and, and if there's interest, whatever. Um, and then we bring this back and we move it forward on the next council if, uh, that's appropriate.
I second.
Okay. For Robert's rules here, we didn't have a motion on the floor, so we don't need a motion to table. So we'll, you guys think about it and, uh, and just think that, you know, and as the mayor, I think that it would be a donation. And obviously, it would then be, uh, their property, if you will.
Yeah.
And they would recognize the city of Roslin. And then we can talk about it again in two, three, I think it's three weeks to go to the next council. And then, and then I would expect council will just vote yea or nay on it at that point.
Yeah.
No, I think it's great. I, I think it's a great, it's a great option. I just, they've been sitting out there forever, so let's do a little background research. Just, you know, we could hold on it for twenty years and it does us no good till we get a building. And that would be, that would be a loss for us when we could be in another city marketing our history with, you know, thousands and thousands of people that will come through every year. So just think about that also. But I'm happy to reach out if you'd like and do a little background research and bring it back.
And one last thing, and I appreciate your time, Mr. Ritter. Uh, the public safety issue of having those things back there has been driving me crazy as long as I've been mayor.
Yeah, when I went back there, I looked at them, I'm thinking, oh.
I don't like them.
This is a lawsuit waiting to happen.
Yeah, yeah.
And kids can be rambunctious.
Yeah, I definitely wanna get rid of them. Um, and I would love to get rid of them this year. But yeah, I just like, like, uh, what council member Cook suggested. We should just check with everybody that's, that's around and that's our history in our museum and just in case, so. But I'm all for it and I, I can't wait to hopefully see them in, in display down there.
That's great. I appreciate your consideration, uh, just for my clarification. So, uh, the next council meeting, will the clerk be notifying me that I will be on the agenda again? Or is this gonna be a simple vote of the council and then they will notify me yea or nay at a later time? How does that work?
You know, Jim, we'll, we'll notify you of the meeting. It will be just a simple vote, you know, after a simple discussion and then, but you're certainly, uh, welcome to join and listen or even, uh, answer questions or anything. But we don't need a full presentation or anything.
Okay. And the next, the meeting is gonna be next, uh, it's once, it's, it's monthly, is it?
Yeah.
On the, uh?
The second Tuesday of the month, whatever day that is.
Second Tuesday of the month.
Yeah.
Thirteenth.
So not next week, the following.
Thirteenth of July.
Two weeks, yeah, thirteenth.
July thirteenth, same time.
Yeah, four-thirty.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim. Great presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh, next up, we've got, uh, citizen comments. Uh, I'll just take them in order here. And the first on the list, on my list here is, uh, Chris Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I often, um, speak for the fire department, so I just wanted to make clear that, uh, my comments tonight are personal and in no way should be construed as representative from the department. Um, in my opinion, the current city staff are the best and most effective we've had in many years. They're all dedicated on how Bubba has put the work back into Public Works, uh, and his crew, Kyle and Jim, or they're just gung-ho to get projects done. So I wanna thank you, Mayor, for bringing on a top-notch team. Um, but I feel that that team's ability to function at full capacity is a little bit compromised by a lack of clear and factual communications. Uh, in the absence of fact-based communication, um, or in the absence of fact-based communications from the city, there are some citizens who make like non-stop information requests to staff, you know, constantly sending emails, write letters to the editor that are not necessarily factual-based, and make public comments that are also short on the facts. And when that false narrative gets out in the public, it's, it's really hard to put back in the box. And I, I just feel that that has cost staff hundreds of hours and wasted time. And frankly, it's cost the council, like, you guys have revisited the same issue multiple times, even though the facts have never changed. Um, and in some cases, this lack of information has led to confusing and disruptive interactions with state agencies and other elected officials. And this can damage long-term the city's reputation and, uh, and just make it so people are less likely to wanna work with us on grants and funding and that kinda stuff. So I, I guess I'd just like to ask the mayor and council to address this matter. And while there's no requirement for council to respond to public comment or letters to the editor, I believe that the city will be well-served by providing candid and fact-based written responses to issues raised. And especially when the integrity of the city or a process is questioned, or when there's a legitimate public interest to do it. So there are times where people have questioned the, like, really the integrity of the city with inaccurate facts, and that doesn't get challenged. And then the public sort of digest that. And for matters of like significant concern, like the water line replacement, the logging project, the Fortera development, I'd love to see like a webpage dedicated to those projects with all the relevant information posted in a timely manner. Because I think that'll reduce the misinformation that currently swirls around. And, you know, I realize that takes a lot of time, uh, but in the end, I believe a lot of time and resources will be saved and that staff morale will be enhanced. And basically, I just, I feel there are too many large projects and too much going on and too good of a staff to allow misinformation, which isn't necessarily intentional.
Can we wrap it up?
It's just that we don't get, we don't get the facts out there to continue to distract from the, the work at hand. So, um, with that, I just wanna thank all of you for your work and commitment to the city and the staff and hope there can be a way to get, um, just the facts of these big projects out there. So thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next up, we have Lynn Louise. Then we sent you the requests.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Lynn, go ahead.
Yeah, I, uh, just wanted to, um, bring up the issue on the renovation upstairs. It's been over three years since, uh, their friends came and asked this question. And I guess that's where we are again, is, um, what's the status? Where are we with?
I, I can't, I can't hear you, Lynn. Um, can, is anyone else having that problem? No? Everybody else can hear? Okay, then it's, then it's my computer. Okay.
Can you hear me, Catherine?
Anyway, that was my question, is, uh, where are we with, what's the status with the renovation?
Okay, thank you, Lynn. I'll discuss that and, uh, council and mayor's concerns at the end. Did you have anything else to say, Lynn? Is that it? Okay, next up, we have, uh, Ellie Baloo.
Ellie, if you can hit star through your asterisk three, then I can unmute you. I'm not, I think you're called in. I don't see your name here. I just see Doug. I can, maybe I'll. Oh, there she is. Up there she is.
Hello, this is Ellie Baloo. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Ellie.
Okay, my name's Ellie Baloo. I live at one-four-five Fifth Street. I have several matters. Um, first of all, concerning process, I agree with Chris Martin and have brought this forward myself for quite a while, that actually posting specific information on the city website would be the most efficient way to disperse, um, information. Um, and I appreciate that this week, the packet that was more available before the cutoff for written comments, although there was thirty-six pages of, um, materials that were not available until after that. Um, as an example of things not posted, I'm sad to say that for the Planning Commission meeting six-twenty-three, there's no way to see any documents. It just recycles through the Town Cloud page. The six-eleven meetings for the Planning Commission are not available. Um, I, and I would like to point out that I asked directly for, I emailed staff asking for contact information for CAC members. And I was informed that I cannot get personal emails and the city does not have, no committees or commissions have any city email, nor is there a listserv. And I think this is a basic problem, that there is no way to communicate with the commissions directly. Um, it used to be that it was possible to have citizens on the emails. It went from staff to committee. I don't know who made this change, that it's no longer happening, but it's no longer happening. So it's combined with things not being posted, it's virtually impossible to track what's going on at committee meetings before they start. Um, I have questions concerning the logging proceeds at the last meeting. And in the minutes, it states that the Roslin Urban Forest Logging Proceeds Resolution was removed from the agenda because the law has already been made to state that any forest profits from a forest project will stay in the forest. However, when I requested information about what this law actually was, I was considered a public, uh, information request. And I was informed that I can expect to receive these documents, which is the name of the law, on or before July thirtieth. And I think that's ridiculous. Um, so that's my response to process concerning also the logging proceeds. I am curious on this receipt, uh, list of inventory, one load to Tacoma of Doug Furr with zero monies involved. I don't quite understand how that works. I also wanna comment on the paid parking, um, matter that's coming, the contract that's before you. I brought up comments on, uh, eighth of June concerning the fact that there's no interest in seeking out public thought on this and that I would ask that it goes to the Planning Commission. Now I see that the city is looking at paying several hundred dollars at a minimum, um, to move this forward with no discussion about, um, with the public. Um, and there was no ability to go along for any site visit because of the lack of posting of the, um, Public Works Committee meeting. I don't know that they went out during that meeting. It doesn't seem that they did. Um, there's no discussion about, sounds like now maybe there's some recognition the posts aren't right, but there's an unspecified fee in the contract for non-standard signage, which I'm assuming we, we might want. I'd like to point out again that the planning is, is one of the elements. Also, the Planning Commission is now considering, parking is one of the issues the Planning Commission is considering under the master planning element they're looking at. And I don't see why we, the city can't look at parking as a single topic with public input. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Uh, last up this evening is, uh, Doug Kilgore.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, Doug, go ahead.
Thank you. This is Doug Kilgore. I'm at one-four-five North Fifth Street. Uh, I'm commenting on the April thirtieth letter concerning the transfer of ownership of, uh, properties related to the Suncadia Resort. Under the development agreement, the county must, must consent to the transfer of entitlements that are associated with that development. And I'm speaking tonight to raise a question that I think is of interest to everyone in the, the city of Roslin, uh, but for which the answer is, is really not known. It has to do with our waste treatment system and the allocation of equivalent resident, residential units of, of hookups essentially, that are available to municipalities, available to Suncadia, and available to the development in the, the, what, what is now being called, what might be called Forty-Seven North. Um, in the two thousand seventeen, uh, capacity analysis that was done by the city of Cleelam, the count of equivalent residential units attributes about twenty-six hundred residential units to Cleelam that are not attributed in any of the, the official agreements that I've been able to obtain. And in a recent request to the city of Cleelam, where I asked, have any residential units been transferred from Suncadia to Cleelam or between any of the cities? Um, there were no documents showing that any temporary or permanent transfer has been done. The, the reason it's of importance to the city of Roslin is because, uh, if we go by the book, it looks like we have about two-hundred-and-fifty ERUs or extra, you know, remaining hookups available. But, um, if, if we look at the actual utilization of the hookups, it appears that we only have about fifty-two. What's left of our allocation, of the municipal, um, allocation? So this is either a problem or a very big problem or not a problem, depending on what the facts are, and we don't know the facts. So my request is that the city, as a party to this agreement and on the occasion of this transfer of rights, uh, uh, get clarification as to whether Suncadia has actually either permanently transferred those ERUs to Cleelam or has made some agreement connected with the sale of properties at Forty-Seven North to transfer those ERUs to, to Forty-Seven North developers. Um, it's, it's a, it, it, the question arose in connection with the, um, the Fortera development. Because if we only have fifty-two hookups left, they might wanna use all of them. We might wanna have some more left. In any case, we certainly wanna know where we stand, and we don't right now. And, and the city is in a good position to find out if you would assert yourselves and ask. Secondly, with respect to the comments of Chris Martin, uh, for all of his love and admiration of facts, I noticed only opinions and innuendo i- in his remarks. And, uh, I take, uh, great umbrage at the abuse that he implies, uh, to impart to public involvement of citizens who are trying to find out information from the city of Roslin that is not available, not clear, or not known, or hidden. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, we'll move forward. Uh, speaking of the new Suncadia LLC rights transfer, um, that, that's informational, council, although there's nothing to, I wanted to make sure council had it. I thought if I just sent it to you guys, then it's not available to the public per se, unless they happen to go to the Suncadia website or something. So I thought I would just put it in the meeting in case you guys wanted to discuss it in public. But at least by having it as part of the meeting, the documents are actually on the web portal and it, they are available to the public. And, and obviously, the public has been able to access them and read them and, and understand them. So, um, is there any discussion on the Suncadia transfer that's been going on for a couple years? Okay, next up, we have two DNR inter-agency agreements. Okay, next up we have two DNR inter-agency agreements. Uh, the first one is part of the, uh, forest work that we're doing on our Beetle Kill project. This is, uh, the funding that you guys had already a- agreed to. This is the official, um, inter-agency agreement to, uh, allow us to have this project finished and help them fund us. You guys have already allowed the funding. Now it's just the inter-agency. So if I could get a motion to accept the inter-agency agreement for the forest work.
I make a motion that we accept the, uh, inter-agency agreement for the forestry work.
I'll second that.
Any discussion here council? And just a reminder, the deadline for this portion of the funding is, uh, the end of July. So, uh, end of June, excuse me. Um, so we'll be wrapping all that up, uh, real soon here. So all in favor of, uh, accepting this DNR inter-agency agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say nay, your name please. The second DNR inter-agency agreement has to do with, uh, a thirty-eight thousand dollar, uh, water wagon is what they've told me. Uh, Dr. Schmidt had brought this up. You guys will again have already agreed to accept the funding involved. This is just the, uh, finalization with, uh, with DNR. If I can get a motion to accept this inter-agency agreement.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the agreement, agreement to move ahead with DNR on this.
I'll second. Any discussion on this one council? Okay, all in favor of the water wagon agreement, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed, say nay. Yeah, I'm gonna assume that's, uh, all ayes there. No one here everybody. Uh, next up, uh, the paid parking contract. We've gotten it back from legal. This is, I don't expect you guys to vote on this this time, hopefully next time, uh, depending on your opinions. But I wanted to make sure you guys had it in hand, that we can thoroughly read it through, the public can thoroughly read it through. We can discuss whatever we need to discuss and then move it forward, uh, at, at the next meeting or after, depending on council's, uh, requests. So we don't need any motions, but feel free to talk about it.
I'd like to know how much the, um, I mean, it does say in the contract that if we have, uh, other than their standard wording on the signs, that that's going to cost us something. So, um, I'd like to know what that is.
Uh, Leah, are you on this evening?
Yes, Mayor, I'm here. Thank you.
Do you have any idea on a change in cost of the signs if we change the wording from standard?
Sure. So if it's just, um, wording, like what I had suggested was, uh, calling it a visitor day pass so that it's clear it's for, you know, basically tells you exactly what it is. Um, and they have their standard layout. So if we accept that and we want to, like I also had mentioned, um, maybe doing like the brown background instead, just so it looks a little more like some of our signage in terms of the color, um, there would be no cost for that. The custom development would be if we are, if the city decides to definitely do like a completely different looking sign. I personally would recommend going with the standard look. These should look like parking signs. It needs to be clear. It needs to be, um, legitimate that, you know, it's kind of, people in the city get trained. You see a parking sign that looks like a, has a sort of certain look to it, uh, it's easy identifiable. Um, and you will note that, um, on this agreement, they have waived the one-time setup fee of two hundred and fifty dollars. So, uh, if the city will proceed, um, with the standard design with, you know, they'll put the city's logo in and then the color and whatever we kind of want to name it or what you want to name it, um, there's no cost to the city. So. Does that answer your question?
And they're gonna throw in a dozen signs, is that correct?
It does say in the contract that there, that there is a charge. So maybe we just need, I can call them up. I called them up before. So I'll do that.
What is your?
Do we have an example of the sign?
There is no charge on here besides the, I mean, everything is zero under price, Catherine.
Um, okay, let me, let me look through the, um, I found it earlier. I'll, I'll look through it again right now.
Okay.
Do we have an example of the sign?
Hey Leah?
Yes.
Were they, and they're offering to start off with twelve signs, is that correct?
That's correct.
Do, do you think it's possible that, is Michelle or somebody?
But don't wait on me. I'll, I'll just call them up and ask them.
Can we put the proposed location map up just for discussion, sort of what we, what we looked at? City and, and everybody can sort of see sort of the proposed twelve sign location.
Give me.
Obviously with permission. And that was something I was going to reach out to Forterra for. If, if we agreed to this, to move forward, I was gonna reach out to Forterra about temporarily putting them in that, uh, location till development starts.
Good idea I think.
But it looks like, um, what, what, when Leah and I were talking, we were, it looked like we were gonna do four, two on each side from First Street to Second, and then one in front of sort of like the, um, Museum Cafe and then one at Logan's and the Brewery. And then, um, one down, if you go to Runche, it was one down sort of where the kids park. Um, and then sort of divide it up down that side till it gets to the old school where it gets a little too narrow to want to have people park. Um, and then we had sort of placed one on the, um, adjacent side there. Uh, was that Arizona, West Arizona I believe? Um, and just sort of open, but that was just sort of what we came up with, uh, with, with, uh, eleven, twelve signs to start with.
The two I see being an issue are the ones in front of the museum. That's probably my main one I'd probably have an issue with because there's so much, there's just limited parking there. And then,
Yep.
Uh, but I'm okay with the Logan's one, but I think the one across the street until that's developed fully and sidewalks all the way up and parking's a little better. I think that's the only one I'd have an issue with, and maybe we can move that to the Forterra and have three over there.
Yep, it's just, this is what it's for. It's for discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I add something else?
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I, this is just my personal perspective, but I think, um, I hear what Councilmember Wax is saying about, um, you know, kind of the hazard parking that happens there. Um, obviously these signs are not going to fix how people physically park their vehicles. Because we, we don't have any infrastructure to really, you know, except for the painted stripes, um, on a couple of our streets. So, you know, it's really hopefully to just start getting revenues for the city and then that will, um, provide a way to hopefully have something more robust in terms of parking or at least support the street fund.
Yeah.
One other thing I would suggest is maybe if we pull one of those off, um, possibly on either Second or Washington, just another spot in the downtown corridor that people might drive by. Um, they won't necessarily, you know, be parking right there, but at least if they see the sign, it's across the street or something, um, and then they would, you know, hopefully get online and pay their, pay for their pass.
Mm-hmm.
One thing I think Leah and I discussed is this is purely just trial sort of run, and this is a, a very inexpensive process to, to invest in. Um, just to see how it works. This is not a, a, a sold parking plan for future. This is really something we've all been discussing on how maybe to generate a little extra revenue on this. And, and it really is just sort of a trial to see how this thing runs. To me, for what it costs, it just seems like we have nothing to lose. At least that's my input. Um, I, I, I know that there's citizens that want a, a parking committee and a plan, and I think that's fantastic, um, to have a committee on that, but I, I think this has nothing to do with future parking. I think this has to do with just trying to generate a little revenue of a very minimal to no investment to the city when you think about it.
Is there an example of the sign? I didn't see that in the packet.
Um, I, I have one somewhere if you want to bear with me for a moment, um, and I can put it up on my screen.
You know, if not Leah, we can, uh, if you can get, provide it to staff here, we can get it to all of council. We got a couple of weeks to.
Okay, I mean, I think we had it in that previous, um,
We did.
Packet that we provided, and I've actually got it right here. So I'm pulling it up and then as soon as I have it visible, I will share my screen if allowed. Okay. So I've got the PDF here.
And just, uh, I'd like to move forward if we can. So you go ahead and, uh, provide that to us and we'll get that out to council before they vote next time.
It's coming up.
Okay.
Oh, there it is.
There it is, if you can see it.
Yep.
So instead of that green background on the bottom, it could be the National Historic District Brown, if you like. Um, and then obviously the logo on the bottom would be different. And then, um, the zone, you know, I think up there because we wouldn't start probably with any different zones, it would just be for the city. And so I think they could say, you know, visitor day pass or something like that.
Yeah, I don't see any issues with the signs.
Like I said, I think it, you know, it needs to look like a parking sign. It's not, it, it's easier to not pay attention to.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks for all your work Leah.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up I've got the business license, uh, agreement with the state. Uh, it is an ordinance. Uh, we're passing this along and they're requiring it. Um, we've discussed this before, so if I can get a somebody to make a motion to, to the state.
I'll make a motion to accept the state ordinance for, um, business license. Commanding?
Seconded. Any discussion here council? I do know that, uh, working with my wife's business and, uh, Department of Revenue and, uh, they've really revamped everything. Uh, COVID is probably not the perfect time to change their entire system, but it is starting to work better. So, uh, I look forward to taking this, well, it is off of our plate, but, uh, making it official. Any other discussion here council?
So just to be clear, from here, from here on out, you have to go online to apply for your business license. No more going to the city. Just to make sure.
Correct.
Okay.
And we, and we will direct them as such.
Yeah, just to make that a public comment.
Yeah, and it's all, it's all online. The, the state's really going online savvy now supposedly. And they're crashing and running maintenance updates all the time, so prepare for that. So all in favor of the BLA ordinance update, say aye.
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 Aye. Anybody opposed, say nay, your name. And lastly, and I apologize if I didn't word this correctly, but, uh, I gave council all the, uh, people that have applied for the vacant council seat, and then I gave you guys, uh, and public record, uh, the questions that we've used in the past, both for when, uh, when I applied as a, as a temp and then, uh, council in the past. I wanted to provide that for you guys in case you guys wanted to change the questions, and we will do the actual interviewing, uh, at the next meeting. And we will get with the, the three candidates and, and get all the timeline and everything set up. I don't know that I'm a hundred percent sold on how we're gonna do this, but, uh, we will do it, uh, at the next council meeting. And make sure to read, uh, what you can read so you're, uh, so you know what their, uh, thoughts are. And, uh, and like I said, if you have any input on the questions, that's really what I'm looking for in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Or just go with what we've got. A couple of you have done this before, uh, I think Councilmember Adams, Councilmember Missel.
Yep, yep.
So, we've all sat in that seat, so.
Yep, yep. No, we'll go through the question. I think, no, I think we should really take the questions seriously and look and see if there's, um, we want to update them. I think, um, if they've been sitting that long, I think there's always a new perspective to look at things and Roslyn's in a different place. So let's make sure we read them and go through them and if we think we can improve them or make them better, um, let's pass it on.
Yeah, send those to, uh, staff and myself, uh, with the questions. And then if we need to, we can have, uh, at the beginning of the meeting, we can, uh, select the questions and then at the end of the meeting, then we can ask the questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Will we be open, you think, on the thirteenth for in-house council at all? Are we not, how are we, what are we looking at? Do we know if we open up on the thirtieth?
Yeah, I'm, I'm working right now with staff and the librarian, uh, to figure out how we're gonna open City Hall. Um, I'm really waiting on what the governor's gonna say. It really comes down to the, the social distancing aspect. I noticed that the city of Clougham has already, uh, getting away from their emergency declaration. I'm not prepared to do that yet. Um, as far as the open public meetings, there really hasn't been a change that, uh, the, Anne Marie is suggesting that we don't change until the governor and the legislators do make the change. Now, that may come sooner rather than later. But until we hear something and we know something, and then Anne Marie's had a chance to review it, uh, it's gonna remain the way it is, uh, which, you know, unfortunately. And the hybrid thing scares me. I don't know, you know, if we gotta go to a thing where we go to South, or the Cleelam, um, Hall like, like the city of Clougham is doing, the, the senior center, you know, maybe that would be the first step. Cause I do miss having in-person, uh, meetings, uh, a lot. So, I'm gonna push for it, but we're not, not until it can be safely done and, and within the restrictions that the state lays out for us.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any other questions? Any other questions on the council seat there, council?
Yeah, can we take out question number five? Uh, what would your agenda be during your first three months? I think everybody on council knows you're just learning your first three months.
Oh, for sure.
And then after the run.
A lot of, like Jeff said earlier, there are a lot of those questions need revamping. That's when I was in, like, yeah, it, those have been way too long. They're just kind of, I think some of them are pretty silly.
Send our suggestions. We'll, we'll put something together and we'll put it in front of you.
Okay, I'll get, I'll get one question.
And that'll be more spontaneous. That'll be more spontaneous for the, uh, for the applicants as well because they won't actually have them for the next two weeks.
Nope, I like changing them up. I think it's a great idea.
Okay, so lastly we got mayor, council and concerns. Uh, I guess I'll start off, uh, and this will help, uh, speak to Lynn Louise's concern and the, and the library board and the, and the friends. Um, so I decided we're just gonna move forward on the project. Uh, we're gonna be short on the budget, um, and I just hope, uh, by the time it's finished that we can come up with some more funding. But, uh, I, I don't want to wait around until we find funding to move forward. And I don't think, uh, you know, I don't think a lot of people feel that that's fair to the contractor or the architect or all the time that's been put into it. So we're gonna move forward. We're gonna get, uh, the bid put in front of you guys at the next one to accept the bid that we have. And then, and maybe even the contract, uh, if, if I can't get the contract through legal by then, then it'll be the following one. And then we can, uh, work on mobilizing the contractor and getting, moving forward on this project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May, um, would this be, um, the sort of the revised minor scope of, of taking out the work that they looked at about a month ago on the exterior to try to get it closer to our budget and then,
Correct, yes.
The other grant that we have would capture that exterior work that covers it already?
That's correct Jeff, yeah. This is the second, the second lower bid.
Yep, yep, okay.
And we'll just have to piece it from there.
Yep, nope, I think there's some good ideas there with the contractor. So I, I'm actually excited and encouraged that we can make it happen.
Yeah, keep moving.
We've got momentum and I think there's been a lot of work behind it and, um, yeah, I, I think it's very doable. I've got a few ideas myself, so. Thank you.
I have a, I have a couple, uh, couple of meetings ago, we had Mr. Shoemaker and, uh, he's building his new house and he was, um, not happy with our process and the permits and the speed that they were going. Um, and I was just wondering if there's any update or anything that, um, council can do to help with this or, um, uh, cause quite frankly, I don't know. He came up to me, uh, in a public setting. He was, he stressed how, uh, frustrated he was with the process and that so forth. And I said, well, I, I, I know Michelle does great work, um, but she can only do as much as she can. And so I know she is limited. Um, and so I was just wondering what we can do as a council to help? Or if there's anything we can do, or if there's any update with, um, the process going faster or smoother, I guess, just to re, just to go back to a concerned citizen comment that we had a couple of weeks, a couple of meetings ago.
Uh, yeah, Jeff, or sorry Nolan.
You're fine.
That, that particular applicant has gotten their occupancy, um, uh, you know, I, there's nothing. That, that particular applicant has gotten their occupancy, um, uh, you know, I, there's nothing I don't feel that we can do to speed up the process, uh, as I mentioned in previous meetings, uh, the process is, uh, slow and, and methodical and painful, uh, at the county level, at all the other city levels, uh, and I feel like we're thorough and we're professional and and we follow the rules, uh, you know, as written. Um, so, you know, I, I don't know that we can improve it, I, uh, I heard Admin, uh, talked about, uh, bringing on a part-time person as we had discussed, and I'm going to do that, and we're gonna work on that, uh, right away, we're gonna put, uh, application, uh, together and get it into the paper, and so we're gonna bring a part-time person on, we're not gonna wait around. So I think that'll alleviate some things, that will probably, that will also help with an open, uh, open city hall. So if that does, you know, help people feel better about the process, that's gonna occur. But the process, what it is, you know, they're still gonna have to get the, uh, appointments, you know, so the, the process will remain the way it is, but maybe, uh, things can be, uh, more smooth. Maybe people feel like they're gonna get answers, you know, whether the answers they want or not, uh, in a more, you know, quicker, I, you know, I don't think that their time is the issue, I think it's that the answers that they're getting based on the law that is written are not the answers that they want to hear. And it, I don't think that asking a different way or asking another time or calling council is gonna change the answers they got the first time. But we are required to continue to answer the way that we do answer, and, and I'm sorry that it seems difficult to some. I can promise you it's not difficult to all, and I think that there are, I get a lot of compliments from developers saying, you know, how professional a city is based on where we are and the staff that we deal with compared to other cities, so.
It wasn't a bash, again, towards our staff, I want to make sure that was clear, it was just circling back to, to that comment.
I get it Nolan, I get it Nolan, and I get these calls multiple times a week. And, uh, and some of them are positive too, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that the ones that we hear sometimes are not, uh, the, you know, necessarily the majority.
Thank you.
People are, people are building and successfully.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, um, I have a comment, but I, I can't, I'm, my, my internet connection is fading in and out, so I don't know if I've interrupted anybody. Am I good to go?
Well, Kathy, go ahead, I think Nolan had one more, but go ahead, if you're in and out, let's get yours in now.
Okay, I just want, I, I just see that, that Joe O'Malley has joined our, our meeting tonight, and he is, um, renovating the old Cametto boarding house, which is of an enormous significance to, um, Roslyn historically, and I would just like to personally say thank you very much and hang in there, that's my comment, and I'm really sorry if I interrupted anybody, I'm having a problem.
No, that was a good, good interruption, thank you Kathy for that, because that was a good reminder to to, uh, voice that too, that, uh, Joe and his crew is, are doing a great job on, uh, renovating that building, so touche on that. Um, but my second comment was, uh, base camp cement pouring project, uh, update with that.
What?
I'm. Base camp, uh, the, the blocks at base camp in the concrete?
I'm not sure where it stands.
We have a, we're, we'll be getting in touch here this week, it sounds like we're gonna have to have another, another discussion about that, Nolan, so you'll be hearing here in the next week or so.
Okay, perfect. Uh, we have our first, uh, we'll have our Public Works meeting again, just to throw this out there and, and pitch it to anybody that wants to come, the thirteenth at, uh, at two thirty of July.
Three thirty, isn't it?
Sorry, three thirty, thirty thirty.
Please, so then I can, I can be there at three thirty, yes.
Yep, sorry, it's been, it's been a little long.
I got, I got.
On the sidewalk project, you know, I, let's just remember, nobody probably wants us to tear that up until after Labor Day, so we got some time here.
Good point.
I've got a couple things. Um, one is just, uh, it actually sort of goes to something sort of like Chris Martin was talking about, but I, I got hit on the street yesterday at the post office about, um, another pretty gross rumor about, um, the water line, transmission line, and apparently there is a rumor, and I'm here to squash it unless somebody here in the office is, is talking and, and says we have another path, but um, there's a rumor right now saying that we're gonna bag the water line and we're gonna hook up to the city of Clougham. Okay, and this is a pretty in-depth rumor, I've heard there's numerous people in the past week, and I, this rumor needs to be squashed. Um, the only discussion I've ever heard in Public Works in four years about the city of Clougham water line is to have an op, uh, an opportunity to capture that if we needed a backup if the transmission line had a failure or during the process of being replaced. But never was it ever an option that I'm aware of to ever be our main water source, I've never heard that, it's never been in Public Works in four years. Those that are out there on, listening to this right now, that rumor is not true, and it needs to stop. These are the things that deteriorate the city and the trust in the city, that is a major, major infrastructure, and it is absolutely false, and I don't know where it comes from, but it needs to be squashed. Um, those questions need to be brought back to the city, come to a council meeting, we'll tell you exactly where we're at, but that is not an option. Um, it was just one that, um, I got hit a couple times by some people that took it very seriously. Um, and that, that's scary, that could really hurt our city with those types of rumors, so we need to pass the word, that is just not true at all. Um, another is, we need to do a unified letter to forty-seven degrees north um, through the city and council member, and I'm wondering if we've started that letter and how we can sign on to it and get that going. I think it's incredibly important to get that in as soon as possible and they start and be, be ready for, uh, the letter acceptance, so that's something I want to make sure we don't pass up, besides being residents and we do it on, as ourselves, but making sure we do it as a unified group for the city of Roslyn, so, um, if we can put that up there, that would be great. And I think that was it, just, um, that was it on my, my end.
I have, uh, one thing to bring forward here. In the conference of government meetings or the cog meetings, we had a proposal by TIP Strategies to develop a proposed, uh, economic development plan for the county. And the, in the original proposal, they wanted money from all municipalities. Jeff Shear and I both met with the, with the, uh, Chair of the group, which is Cory Wright. Explained, we don't have money to put into that right now, and this county is very different, upper county to lower county. And the proposal was more geared to Ellensburg, but it did encompass Clougham and Roslyn somewhat too. So in a revised thing, it looks like the county is gonna pick up the tab with this project with maybe Ellensburg taking in a portion as well. But it'll encompass the whole county, and what the cog wants us to do is to be supportive of the plan and helpful in any way we can be. Um, there'll be stakeholder meetings, we've been to this with other groups before, and then there's an information, implementation portion to it too. Um, made it very clear, and Jeff and I both did, that we're not, we don't have any money to put towards this. And, uh, Mr. Wright agreed, and, uh, but they want us to be supportive of it, and what I come tonight to ask you for is would we be supportive of that? Um, putting a, a development plan together and, and help that in any way we can, non-monetarily, I want to make that very clear, no money. So I need, need to, an idea, we can say that the city will, will deal with that or not, I don't know. I don't see a problem with it personally, but with no money, we can pull stakeholders together and sit in on meetings and help surveys and who knows, maybe something good will come out of it for upper county as well. Anybody have some thoughts on that, and do I have the council and mayor's permission to say, support it non-monetarily?
Well, what is it exactly, Tom, a development strategy for the whole upper county, you said, or all the county?
The whole county, um.
A development strategy for what kind, like residential or commercial, industrial?
New businesses, bring new business to the county, better paying jobs, other retailers, things like that.
So really just fishing out ideas for every kind of thing they, right now?
Trying to bring new businesses to town and, uh,
Okay.
Hey Tom, just so we can see the ask, is there some, can you give me some information on this so that we can better understand what exists in the asking us for?
Sure I can, I will send you the bullet points on it.
Yeah, and then if, if we need to put that, uh, you know, on the next agenda, that's no problem. Like you said, if there's no money involved, and it seems like a positive thing.
Yeah, it won't be positive, it might be negative, but I will, I will make sure I email it to you and you can send it out from there, okay?
Okay, that's perfect, Tom, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Um, I got one more, I'm sorry, because we haven't done it yet and I'm kind of disappointed, but I want to set the date of July seventeenth, because we are already six months through twenty twenty-one. And I, I haven't seen a budget or any numbers yet for that, and so I'd like to have a budget retreat July seventeenth, but have the budget numbers before that and sit down, if it's a Saturday or we figure it out, we've always done it on a Saturday. Um, but we sit down for four hours and we discuss our budget. I'd also think we should discuss the forty-seven degrees north and any other big topics that we probably need to really sit down as a, a council and just figure out our position with our budget, because with what was presented tonight with BNO tax and uh, real estate tax and even the parking, just having all this stuff in a new bud, with some budget, um, formulas in there so we can, or numbers so we can see what we're looking at. It would be nice to have a budget retreat in the month of July. I think we should have had one in the month of June because we've always had it at six months. But we, but we've had it in July, we've actually had it in August too, but I, I think we need to schedule tonight a budget retreat meeting.
Is there any way we could talk you out of the seventeenth, cause I will not make the seventeenth.
That's the Croatian picnic.
I, I'm the chair of the Croatian picnic, and, um, I will be dialed in for forty-eight hours.
Yeah, that's a bad day, so again.
Hey, guys, guys, uh, let's, so staff, we'll get with the admin committee and we'll get something figured out. Uh, let's keep in mind that last year we did this in many meetings, uh, before council, uh, because of COVID situations. So, but I'm not saying that we can't have a retreat, uh, in person, um, but the seventeenth obviously, uh, will not work. So we'll push it back from there and what, like I said, uh, this will be admin's decision and staff's decision, and then we will present that to, uh, to the whole.
Can, can we have ideas or can admin meet before so we can, cause that, that just sounds like it's gonna be pushed till next, till July's meeting, and then we won't figure out a date until it, it just seems like we're gonna push and push and it'll be in August by the time we have a date. So I'm just asking if maybe admin, if Kathy can contact Jeff and, and push this a little faster than how we run in government. Is that's too much, sorry.
I'll, I'll get that, I'll get that worked out there Nolan, and, and I gotta be honest, it seems like August is more likely.
Which is too, which is, which is too bad, because I've been asking for this for months now, and again, we haven't seen numbers, and I would like, like, before I would get bombarded, which, yeah, it's not always nice, but you'd get bombarded.
Budget figures out just recently, Nolan.
Yeah, they're on the admin.
And that's, and that's fine, but I would, I still would like to.
Didn't get them.
What?
Uh, did you not receive the, I mean, we have the, we have the half-year numbers out already.
Maybe I didn't see them, sorry, I'll look.
As well as first quarter, we'll, we'll get you some, we'll, we'll get everybody some, if you didn't get it, maybe nobody got them.
I'll forward them to you Nolan, we just had them for that meeting last week and we discussed all of our budget, that's how we came up with the one that we think we can afford a part-time employee. So, um, I'll forward you those tonight, Nolan.
Cool. If there's anything else, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, meeting adjourned, thanks council.
Thank you.